It's five o'clock, so we will bring the March tenth work session to order. Item one is review Whitetail Ridge study and Travis, we will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, we're going to revisit, represent. Well, revisit is probably the better, better term for it. The Whitetail Parkway Corridor Study, the findings. I've updated a couple of slides in here to kind of bring it to current, why we're here, that kind of stuff. But kind of wanted to bring the P and Z as well as the City Council together to talk about the Whitetail Parkway, particularly because Planning and Zoning had some questions about the presentation as well as some of the details within the Whitetail Parkway Corridor Study. So just kind of an introduction and a background. So the Whitetail Parkway Corridor Study was completed back in 2023. So Whitetail Parkway picks up over near Big Creek State Park. A portion of it was platted as part of Whitetail Ri-- one of the plots, I think it was Platte Two at the west end. And then there's a good stretch of it that runs between that connection to Northwest Seventy Second Street. There's then a portion that continues east of Seventy Second to Third. And then as current, as currently shown in the comprehensive plan, you've got these S curves that bring Whitetail Parkway to be in alignment with Northwest Hundred Twenty Sixth Avenue. Through the findings of this study, the alignment of the, of Whitetail Parkway as it crosses the Four Seasons Polk City Platte remains unchanged. Any and all changes that are, that were proposed as part of this corridor study occurred between Seventy Second and Third and then between Third and its connection to Hundred Twenty Sixth Avenue. So why now? This is the original slide back from 2023 when we presented this to the Council initially. The alignment west of Northwest Hundred, or Seventy Second was determined in 2019 and associates from the Four Seasons Polk City Platte that remained unchanged as part of the corridor study. At the time, the reason we did the corridor study was the City Council was after candidates for funding. And at that time, we specifically targeted STBG funding. And the reason for the timing, even though that the, the development in and around the Whitetail Parkway Corridor wasn't immediately happening, was that STBG funding is delayed four years from award. So we wanted to get that into the application cycle in time to use it and not to severely hamper the development of Whitetail Parkway between Third Street and Seventy Second. At that time, there, we were hearing rumblings and interest for the Young Investments Property, which is the property that lies between Third and Seventy Second, as well as the Gateway Crossings development, which lies east of Third Street and south of Northwest Hundred Twenty Sixth Avenue. During discussion with potential developers, the concerns had arisen regarding the segment between Wolf Creek, so the waterway that runs just west of Third Street and North Third Street, particularly as it pertains to truncating or dividing parcels of land as well as modifying frontage to land after that land had been developed. I think I skipped one there. Oh, no, I hope you already did. So this kind of gave you an idea of what we were just talking about there. The blue is that Four Seasons Polk City development, that the alignment of Whitetail Parkway remains unchanged. The yellow was the Whitetail Parkway Corridor Study area. And then that purple is future Gateway Crossings development. So east of Third Street, south of Northwest Hundred Twenty Sixth. So why a joint session now? The Whitetail Parkway alignment, as recommended by Snyder back in 2023, was originally included as part of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number Fourteen that Council recently approved. But we actually removed that at the Planning and Zoning Commission stage due to concerns about the alignment and the recommendation and wanting to have further discussion with Council and P and Z. We wanted to facilitate that discussion between P and Z and Council. And then we would ask that both bodies provide us guidance with how you'd like to proceed in terms of either leaving the comprehensive plan as it is today or modifying it in some way based on the alignments that we determined as part of this study. So this study resulted in three potential alignments that we presented to City Council for the extension of Whitetail Parkway from Seventy Second to its eventual connection with Northwest Hundred Twenty Sixth Avenue. And each option included the construction of a triple barrel twelve foot by eight foot box culvert to convey Wolf Creek under Whitetail Parkway. Kind of give you some details on that box culvert. We minimize, basically, we aligned the, of Whitetail Parkway between Seventy Second and Third Street to minimize the distance in which crossing occurred across Wolf Creek Drive. We estimate that the drainage area is seven point three square miles north of this, where this potential box culvert would be. And then we're proposing two hundred foot of a triple barrel twelve by eight. We did evaluate the bridge at the time, a, a bridge at the time that this study was completed, but because of some of the elevation challenges as well as some of the costs at that time, we decided that a bridge was probably prohibitively expensive for what it was trying to do. And it also limits the amount of flexibility the city has as they continue to grow to the north if you need additional capacity. Bridges are very, very expensive to expand. And so we, we opted to recommend the construction of a triple barrel box culvert, no matter which alignment was selected. So option one is essentially what's shown in the comprehensive plan today. There is, there was the addition of this S curve, or I think it was more substantial than was originally shown to match the alignment of LIDAR. LIDAR changes every couple of years. So we basically picked based on where that narrow, that crossing would be narrowest and we would have the least amount of impact and fill to bring to the site. Couple of concerns or I guess cons with this is, so this is Northeast Ninth as shown on the Gateway Crossings neighborhood sketches that we've seen. Based on this alignment, we don't feel that there is adequate site distance for this intersection. So what you're seeing here probably doesn't work in terms of site distance, particularly if we add a turn lane to Whitetail Parkway in this area due to commercial traffic. This intersection would likely include traffic signals and pavement widenings that would be part, that would be determined as part of a larger traffic impact study. And then our traffic engineers have concerns about signalization of a collector, which is what Whitetail Parkway is, in arterial street. Typically, they don't perform very well. They can sometimes lend themselves to more rear end collisions in that if you hit a red light when you're not expecting, you, you know, you slam on your brakes, somebody's not expecting it, that kind of thing. So that, those are the, I think the pros are that it, it provides a bypass of Northwest Hundred Twenty Sixth directly to the Big Creek State Park. It probably protects some of the capacity that we have on North Third Street and discourages pass through traffic from using Third Street as a pass through. And as Northwest Forty Fourth develops, it probably pushes people to Northwest Forty Fourth. But that's kind of the, the pros and cons of what we saw with option one. This is kind of a breakdown of how we conceptualize how the cost sharing would happen. Developer number one in the dark blue would be completely responsible for that area as it lies within their development. This red area, as we've met with potential developers on the Young Investment Property and looked at some plating documents, some easement documents, there's a substantial amount of floodplain and other easements located east of Wolf Creek. So at the time of the study, we had determined that it would likely be the city's responsibility to bear within the red simply because there's no developable land adjacent to that property. And so it's going to be exceedingly difficult for development on the Young Investment Property to pencil out based on what we understood from potential developers. And then that purple would be developer number two, and that would be their cost to bear with then any future improvements to this intersection being split fifty percent from the city, between the city and developer number two. And that's assuming that each quadrant is given equal weight and not weighing uses to those improvements. So there, there is, there is a little bit of flexibility, I think, in some of the cost sharing as we work through some of these options, but just kind of give you guys an idea of what we're thinking. Option number two, propose two roundabouts that would align with the eventual north, north, south street that would run from Gateway Crossings down through Big Creek Commons and connect neighborhoods together. One of the benefits of this option was that it creates regularly shaped rectangular parcels that are easier to develop than option one, that creates small or oddly shaped parcels that are difficult to develop. It does cut in substantially to the developable land located north of Northwest Hundred Twenty Sixth Avenue. It involves probably a lot more paving. And in general, it is a much more costly option than the other two. The, part of the reason we're showing two roundabouts here and here is the spacing of these intersections is too close for one of them to be signalized and one of them to be roundabout. Those two signal, or those two intersection treatments just don't function very well together. You know, roundabouts are meant to flow freely and then handle really peaky traffic, whereas signals typically are better suited to heavy amounts of traffic or one roadway getting a lot of traffic with intermittent traffic on side roads.
When you say signal, do you mean just traffic signals or do you mean like a four way stop too?
A four ways, no, so it would just be traffic signal. So if it, if it were to meet the warrants for a traffic signal, that's when the concern becomes. And our thought would be is this intersection almost certainly is going to be, needs some sort of intersection treatment at some point because it is, this is a connection directly to the interstate. And then this is viewed as a collector street, as it's connecting multiple neighborhoods north, south. And this would continue to the north as well. So in the short term, it probably does not, the effective intersection areas probably don't overlap if you were to do a four way stop at one of them. But ultimately, as you get more and more traffic, particularly in a commercial district, our inclination is to say at some point, both of those are likely to need some sort of intersection treatment. The way that we split these costs out, typically what we've done in several different communities, St. Andrew Associates, as well as the way that we handled the Vista Lake roundabout was a kind of a piecemeal or more unique version of cost sharing. So you'll see the dark blue and the red are the same in that what's being shared. The purple will, would be related to developer number two. And then the yellow and orange would be shared costs in the roundabout. Basically, what has typically been done for roundabouts is that you essentially pencil out the cost sharing as if it were an intersection or a signalized intersection. And then the city would cover the difference between a signalized intersection and a roundabout. That's not to say that that's how you need to do it if you were to select this option, but this is kind of the way that we set up our cost sharing so that everybody understands where our numbers are coming from. And I'm not touching on the, the money component of this because I have a summary slide later that I think is a little easier to understand what's happening. And then option number three is a culvert with roundabouts along North Third Street. So this proposes two roundabouts within the existing alignment of North Third. In our opinion, it addresses both safety and traffic volumes along all three impacted roadways, all three being Northwest Hundred Twenty Sixth Avenue, North Third Street and Whitetail Parkway. It also helps to serve as a gateway to future commercial development along Hundred Twenty Sixth and Northwest Forty Fourth, as well as it serves to reduce speed as we get, continue to push the transition from rural Polk County to Polk City further north. Introducing those two roundabouts as you enter the city helps traffic calming. It helps to slow folks down. And I think generally speaking, it helps the safety of the roadway itself. And much like option two, these intersections are likely too close to have a mixture of intersection treatment. And so that's why we opted for the tandem roundabout versus signalizing one and roundabouting the other. And then again, the way that we've, we've set up the cost sharing is similar to option two where you've got the blue and the red being the same as option one with the yellow and purple being shared via that, splitting the signalization, upgrading to a roundabout cost. And that's kind of how those costs are broken down. So just for cost comparison sake, option one, which is the alignment more or less as it is today, the city's cost is two point six five million dollars with five point oh two nine being attributed to developers. Option two, which is the roundabouts offset from Third Street, the city's cost is five point oh five six million dollars with the developer covering five point six six million. And then option three, we've got the city attributed with four point seven eight one million and the developer attribute, and a developer attributed with three point six five million, or six, three, five million. One thing worth noting is that as we continue to push into this area as the develop, as development happens around it and the necessity is noted, there are some of these city costs that could be covered via grant funding. And that's another reason that we've selected roundabouts as the recommended intersection treatments is because roundabouts typically perform better in grant applications than signalized intersections do. So the recommendations as presented back in 2023, and we'll, we'll stick by it today, was that St. Andrew Associates recommended option number three and that we do not recommend option number two. For, for us, the benefits don't outweigh the cost comparisons when it comes to option two. We wanted to present something to you that didn't impact North Third as it stands today. But generally speaking, option one and option three were our preferred options. Back in twenty three, we recommended that the city apply for twenty twenty, the twenty twenty four application for STBG funding. The city completed that application. It was not awarded. And basically, the feedback that we got based on the scoring was that STBG doesn't like to award projects that are prospecting for development. So what we would say is that we, if that option's selected again, we would encourage you to apply as development continues to happen and the necessity would be driven versus prospecting and trying to get out in front of those, those projects. And then we recommend that Wolf Creek, that Wolf Creek culvert is planned in the next CIP or that the city be prepared to partner with the developer should development on the Young Investment Property happen. The big thing there is typically speaking, we don't want those collectors to dead end. So our recommendation is that the city is prepared to extend Whitetail Parkway to Third Street at the time that that development's ready or work with the developer to phase it in a manner that is palatable to the city, both from an emergency standpoint, a transportation standpoint, and understanding when we can get that, that Whitetail Parkway extended to North Third Street. So a conceptual phase, phasing plan that we set up as part of the, the original study was that phase one would be that Northwest Hundred Twenty Sixth Avenue and North Third Street intersection. That was being driven by the Gateway Crossings development to the southeast, having commercial traffic, having mini storage traffic and having some high density residential traffic. That's going to be the intersection that is most impacted in the immediate future. And then each of those other things would follow behind. With phase two and three, we kind of loop, lump those together, but those could be split out in that phase two. It could be constructed at any time that the city wants to prioritize that box culvert. Being fully aware that because you are impacting a major waterway like Wolf Creek, there is going to be some lead time with core coordination, core permitting and some of the other things that we're going to have to work through on the regulatory side. And then phase three could follow alongside phase four, whenever that developer would be ready to construct it. And then phase five, our recommendation would be is that you do that on a as needed basis in terms of when the traffic and when the development drives the need for that intersection. And then cost breakdowns of each of those as they're shown on that diagram. So the next steps, as we presented them back in 2023, was to apply for the STBG funding for phase one, submitting, submitting the entire overall plan to the Duane MPO, program that box culvert during the next CIP planning period. And then following box culvert construction, await Whitetail Parkway construction across the property between Northwest Seventy Second Street and North Third with the city partnering for that roadway construction. Next steps, as they stand today, we'd like to have Planning and Zoning and City Council discuss regarding the proposed alignment, where you guys want to land and provide a recommendation to staff in terms of whether or not you want to update the comprehensive plan. You want to leave it as is? Do you want to see us dig a little bit deeper, that kind of thing? Consider future, future funding applications for the funding of phase one and then program that box culvert if development pressures the roadway connection. So we've kind of shifted in terms of where that box culvert sits in terms of, I think the council just needs to be prepared to consider construction, constructing that box culvert maybe earlier than you want if the developer, or if, if development in that area drives the need. Be happy to answer any questions, but we'll be looking for the commission and the council to discuss and provide guidance.
So when you say prioritizing the box culvert in the next CIP, are you talking about the twenty six to thirty CIP or the thirty to thirty five?
So I think it's probably reasonable to do twenty six to third, or no, thirty, thirty and beyond with the idea being that if, if the right development comes along, maybe you shift priorities within the, the tail end of the current CIP. That, that would be my current thinking.
And we are sure we think that the, the northern roundabout in option three would actually need, that that intersection would need a signal or a roundabout at all?
At some point it will, yes. I, I think that's why we set it up in that manner where phase five would be the last one and it would be as an, on an as needed basis. Because ultimately, it's going to be driven by what happens around it in terms of when that, when that treatment needs to happen and what kind of treatment we do. Because there is a distinct possibility that depending on how everything else develops around it, there may be enough parallels where you just stop sign the, the east and west legs and then you let third free flow. It, it just, it really depend, it's really, really going to depend on what development happens around it, what comes first, what specific uses come in and where all of those things lie.
Do we ever foresee that becoming a four way intersection with an additional roadway?
Right, yes. And I should have mentioned that, yes. The way that we would set it up, if we were to construct that before the east leg is built, is we would basically take it back to the splitter islands or where the, the street is a normal width. And then it would be the developer's responsibility to the east to, to carry that street through.
Anyone else? How about Planning and Zoning? Floor's open.
Would you like us to go to the podium or come here is fine from here?
Why don't you come to the podium? It's always, since we record it and all.
Oh, let's see here. First of all, for the folks that don't know me, I'm Ron Hankin, so I'm a Planning and Zoning Commissioner. And we first saw or discussed this in November and on the Planning and Zoning agenda and could not come to a consensus on that evening. And that's why we fashioned a motion that extracted this portion from the Comprehensive, Comprehensive Plan update for future consideration. Kind of the reason for that is Planning and Zoning had a lot of history in developing the ideas for this area. And that was done along with the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan. And as we looked at different options for transportation systems with our consultant at that point in time, a key point for us with the preparation of that comprehensive plan was trying to come up with some sort of a north bypass for our community. We wanted to make it easy for people in the northwest section of, of our community to be able to get to the interstate going north or to get to Forty Fourth going north without having to go through the city square. We wanted to give the option for people trying to access Big Creek State Park to be able to get there from the interstate or even from Ankeny going north and across versus going by our city square to do so. And really, most importantly was, I think, the morning and evening and Saturday rush hours that we have that go through the city square that make Third Street and Broadway back up for three or four blocks on a frequent basis. I know personally, I've been trapped in the post office parking lot. And I've also been trapped at, on the corner by the, by the pizza shop where I am unable to get out onto Third Street because of all the traffic backed up. And that happens pretty regularly. And the key point is it's going to get much worse. And what I see, the east-west pattern that we're really trying to solve here, our goal when we did the comprehensive plan was to try to make that as easy and simple to use, to encourage people to use it, to encourage mapping systems to see that it's an alternative when traffic backs up and starts sending their customers these alternative ways so that we don't get into more of a critical problem here at the city square. Currently, we have the two lanes, one lane each direction on Broadway and Third. Expanding that to be three lane or four lane is really going to be untenable. Really, the, the only thing we can do is try to minimize the delay at the stop sign. Not sure if a, a traffic light will really improve that much as on the red cycles, the traffic will indeed back up. So to me, what we're doing north directly impacts what's happening a block from here as well. And I kind of talked a little bit about the northwest area town and the, the bypass concept. And really, the, trying to make it as simple as we could so that there weren't going to be zigzags and jogs for this traffic that's diverting away from downtown and trying to find a faster path from, you know, we're trying to make that as easy as we possibly can for them. As we talked about this in our November meeting, we had not yet seen the, the study that was presented to us tonight. We had that sent to us right after the meeting, so we had a chance to take a look at that. And I, I think the, the folks at Snyder did a very good job of, of putting together three very good options. What I had a little bit of concern with was, you know, as, when, as you reduce the number of options into just three, many times you, you know, you, some of the details get lost in what you're trying to summarize in those three options. And there may have been some other options, tweaks to some current options that might also work out fine. As I looked at that, I saw option one being the closest to what we had come up with, with the comprehensive plan. But certainly in hearing from Travis, saw that it had some issues with regards to the tightness of the S curves and also potential problems with the signalized intersection on Third. However, I, I kind of hate to throw out the baby with the bath, bathwater, I would say, from the standpoint of, can this option one be modified to make it still achieve the goal of creating a northern bypass across our city for traffic without having the zigzags, without, you know, throwing the whole thing out the window. And some brainstorming that we did that night in that meeting was, well, if you, I guess, a good. a good place to start might be to go back to slide number three in your handout. If you look on Northwest 126th...
Oh, where's my pointer?
You'll see where the, just east of Third, as you come out of the S-curves, there is a farmstead that is located right by where the bike path will be coming down from the north. And if the S-curves could actually be made less tight there, and start the S-curves further to the east, making the diagonal portion longer, that solves a few issues. It makes the S-curves less tight so that some of the concerns about, you know, speed going around those curves would be less of an issue because the curves would be less tight. Also, the north-south road that will be needing to go through that area could actually go straight north from the school as opposed to curving to the east and actually hit that diagonal portion about square in the middle, and could actually do a curve into that diagonal section and then curve back to the north while still allowing for hopefully sight distance in each directions. Also, as far as the intersection goes with the realigned 126th and Third Street, I don't think P&amp;Z had any care or opinion as to whether that would be a signalized intersection or a roundabout. If you don't like roundabouts and you're looking for a champion to fight for your cause to have fewer roundabouts, I'm not that guy. So just so you know, you know, what we're looking for in the comprehensive plan was a smooth, easy route across the north side for traffic and for mapping systems to use. But whether that be a signalized intersection there in the future, or a roundabout intersection there in the future, you know, I don't think we had any firm opinion that I could determine from that. Also, if you move that curve further to the east, then the existing 128th would go, would have less of a triangle portion of land that would be much further to the east as well. And I agree with Travis that those would be harder to develop without tying them from the north side of the current 126th to the landowner to the south, and total agreement with Travis on that. Also, just a couple of things, I guess I personally noticed in looking through the presentation when we received it back in November, is related to the cost assumptions. And if we look at slides number 10 and number 14, once again, looks like in slide number 10, you see the large portion there that would be city-only, and that going up to the signalized intersection, whereas if you look at slide 14, that is greatly reduced because of the approaches that are required for the roundabout, causing less of that roadway to be city-only as far as its expense. But once again, we have no opinion as to whether that should be a roundabout or not. That could be a roundabout, from our opinion, under Option One as well, meaning that that potential cost savings could be included there as well. But I guess I'm, from my own personal opinion, I'm not necessarily sold that Option One should be thrown out anyway without at least looking at further modifications. Some of that, I'm speaking from history, from back when we created the comprehensive plan. In fact, some of the council members were included in that group in further preparation of that time. But as far as, you know, talking about the specifics of some of the alterations that could be done to Plan One, some of that is just my own opinion as well. I don't want to say that I'm speaking for the P&amp;Z by any means for all of those issues. So I guess any questions that you might have of me?
Well, thank you. And Ron, I don't remember exactly when I heard Whitetail Parkway for the first time, but I am pretty sure I was sitting right next to you at a P&amp;Z meeting, so it does go back that far. And I agree almost categorically with your points. I'm very interested in the development of this, and I'm less interested in the execution. The execution, like you said, will get done based on development, and I want to be proactively communicating to those developers the impact, because some of this with the ranges of costs may extend or delay development significantly. But I think of all the good points you made, when I say I'm concerned about the development, our ability to divert traffic away from the square for pass-through people, and I want to be careful how we say this so as not to, you know, reroute potential customers and all those kinds of things, but our ability to alleviate the stress, this intersection right here in particular is a key aspect and something that whichever option, and I'm inclined to, like I said, agree with a lot of your points, that Option One with some tweaks or even wholesale changes is probably the best path forward to do whatever we need to do. So when somebody punches, you know, is in Grimes and punches getting to 35, that they pick this route, or the GPS picks this route as opposed to going through town? Because that's, even if that means spending a little bit more money, that's kind of our primary role in a long-term development position, is to do what we can to maintain what we have at the square and not bust at the seams from a traffic standpoint, because I think we're already seeing that on 118th to some degree, and doing a better job of this may help with that, as well as the primary aspect, again, my opinion, the traffic at Third and Broadway. So I definitely think that engaging probably P&amp;Z and the developers to some degree, because what we don't have a ton of insight is Snyder's job is to present the best layout based on terrain and a lot of factors, which you've done a great job of, but the impacts to how this will be developed and the costs associated with those developments is a key point, too.
I think one thing that's worth noting that maybe I didn't emphasize enough is, when we were working with the developer that owns Gateway Crossings, their biggest concern with Option One is the changing of frontage. So there's a commercial lot in the corner of 126th Avenue and North Third Street that would have two frontages essentially onto major thoroughfares that then, when you did Option One, would change it. That's not meant to steer, but I realize as Ron was talking specifically, that I didn't, maybe I brushed over that a little bit. That is the one thing that I know for a fact, we've heard from developers, and I'll let you guys weigh the importance of that, but that is something that we have specifically heard.
Well, and that is a perfect example of something that I want to be aware of. If it compromised, let's, you know, make this overly black and white, which it is not, but if one is the only thing that, in that scenario that I alluded to earlier with GPS, that gets people on this route versus going through town, then we'll have to have a conversation with the developer, and so they understand the why. But, and I do want to understand that, that the primary driver here for me is that pass-through traffic.
And if I could just do a quick follow-up on the Gateway Crossing also. P&amp;Z worked on the comprehensive plan in 2015, primarily it was approved by council in I don't see how any potential developer could expect that they would have frontage on a primary corridor that is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan that was passed nine years ago. And for them to expect that, I think, would be, you know, just laughing at our process.
Sad fifth negotiation.
Travis, in Option One, did you guys look at a roundabout at the intersection of Whitetail and Third? I mean, I would assume that would be similar to like a Wygell and Polk City Drive, where you're pulling in a collector and arterial together.
Yeah.
Had a possibility with Option One to alleviate traffic and not have to worry about a signalized intersection?
I think so. I think that's a reasonable thing. We would have to look at the traffic and what we're projecting. We've done enough traffic impact studies to have some decent information. There is a distinct possibility that we would construct a single lane that would then, we would want to lay out so that we could potentially put a multi-lane in at some point, depending on how and when some of those changes are made. But yeah, we can look at that.
Yeah, I'll just give up. As always, Ron did a very nice job of kind of summarizing all of our thoughts. He typically does that for us. But I, also, when I look at Option One, I like Option One. I like the thought of maybe tweaking a little bit and moving that intersection south, if there's no constraint that holds out there, and then smoothes out your curves to the east, maybe keeps a little more frontage, or adds a remnant that you could add to the developer to the south. But that's kind of the option that I look at, and I don't know what constraint is out there that stops you, but if you probably look at a cost of around about two and a half million dollars, like, we could do a lot of other traffic calming and/or modifications to the corridor for that. So just mine, I'm putting to keep in mind.
We do have an audience member here.
Two?
Two?
Cliff.
Oh, Cliff, yeah.
So I know we put the connection to the, for the box culvert across where we did, based on what would be the easiest to do. Is it substantially more difficult to push it further south, closer to 126th, so you don't even really have to do much of an S-curve up to that intersection?
Well, so the caveat to that is, is that we use LiDAR. And for those that don't know, LiDAR is imagery taken from above, and it really, really struggles with trees.
Sure.
So what I would say is that the alignment that we're showing there probably isn't exactly where we would put that street. We would have to survey it first. I think there is flexibility in terms of north-south, where we put all that stuff. And I think, in all honesty, there's flexibility east-west, where we put the S-curves, the curves we use, that kind of stuff. I think there is some flexibility. I think this is where we kind of landed as the best first take at it with the information we had. Because the other thing is, is right now, we're basing some of our concerns on there being that western street that hooks in right there. Well, if that western street is pushed 200 feet to the west, that makes some of that less of a problem. So I think that was also, I guess it's a caveat to, you know, in 2023, we did this study with the information we had. And so I think for these planning documents, and I think Ron did a really nice job of, you know, this is the view we have, or the vision we have for this area. And so if council likes Option One with maybe some looking at a roundabout, maybe in mind with some of the S-curves, and what can we do with some of these other things, I think we use this more as a vision document or a planning document with exact details hammered in as things are less cloudy, I guess would be a good way of putting it, in terms of, you know, right now, we've got one piece that kind of drove some of the conversation, and we have a layout, but we haven't heard from that developer in 18 months. And so there's a distinct possibility that based on the interest he's getting, that layout changes, maybe he sells it to somebody else and they have a different idea for it. So I think, I think we can, we can take the guidance Jeff gave us in terms of looking at a roundabout, kind of put together an updated cost breakdown. And then the other things we can do is, like Ron has suggested, we can look at maybe flattening some of those curves, lengthening that tangent, and we can look at some of the other options we have. The big thing that we'll want to make sure of is, since this study was completed, the county has acquired that trail outlot on the eastern portion of these properties. So the thing that we don't want to do is, we don't want to do something that's going to restrict or hinder the site distance, because that is a known entity. That is an acquired piece of land that we know that's where the alignment's going to go. And they have at least preliminary plans at this point in terms of where that alignment is. So, and from my understanding, Northwest 126th has some of the elevation issues in terms of the vertical curves that lend itself to maybe questioning how far east we can push that. But I think, I think all those things are on the table. I think what we would encourage council to do is understand that this is a planning document, and it's more about which concept do you like better, not necessarily the nuts and bolts exact layouts.
So, help me, how are we impacting the trail here? I mean, are...
So, site distance.
Because I agree with your point that we don't want to do, just give me a, for instance, where it could impact how the trail crosses.
So if you push that S-curve too far to the east, if you're coming left and there is something developed here...
Yeah.
You could create a site distance issue where somebody coming around a curve can't see the bike sitting at the intersection, and vice versa, the bike can't see the car, so they're not adequately reacting to one another. That's the concern we have with site distance.
Just moving the curve too far over.
Yeah, so essentially, what we would do is, we would more or less take whatever the future land use plan has for a use, we'd put a setback there, and we'd set a building right there. And then we would look at the site distance and how all that plays.
So just one other final question, I guess, for everyone up here, and P&amp;Z. Is the ultimate goal for this planning document corridor protection, like, we're going to live and die by it? Because if we have a development come in and say, "We got a great idea, it doesn't quite meet what your proposed Whitetail Parkway looks like," are we going to come back and do this again, or are we saying, "This is done"?
I mean, I think we always have to, would it take a grand slam to change things? Yes, not a triple or a double, but, I mean, the potential always exists for something to change things. I think we maybe are a little bit ahead, but again, for good reason. I think the planning here is important, and the principles with the information we have are certainly important, and it would take something drastic, because again, we're talking about the core part of town, even though we're not in town here, but the impacts to what we do, ability to have things at the square. So it's kind of a non-answer, but it would have to take something significant, in my opinion.
Ron, anyone else that, I mean, that, I agree, I'm just making sure that we're all walking out of here going, "Yeah, you know, this is, it's not quite set in stone, but it's pretty close to what we're comfortable with."
I don't think you can make a longer-term decision than transportation.
Yeah.
No matter what business goes there, will likely come and go over the next century, that road will not change. And right now, it's highly important.
Yep. I just think back to some other projects we've worked on, not we, me, and I'm sure Justin in the past, where you've had corridor protection projects, and 25 years later, it doesn't look remotely close, just because we had an idea, and then it just kind of blew itself up. Again, I was throwing it out there, making sure we're all comfortable with that logic.
So how are we moving forward with our comprehensive plan amendment? Are we not making an amendment to this particular section?
Is an Option One in the comprehensive plan now?
Yes. Would you agree?
Yes. What I would say is, what we would do is, whenever the next comprehensive plan amendment comes through, we would clean up the alignment based on the conversation we've had tonight. And then the other thing that we kind of remove, or that we removed or modified that got omitted was, we added a star to the future streets. that got omitted was we added a star to the future, um, streets map that indicated future intersection treatments. Um, and we left that wide open to be a roundabout, traffic signal, anything like that. There may be something of, associated with that that we may need to modify. But I think we, what we could do is we could put together a quote-unquote final planning document, basically summarizing, based on the changes we're going to make to option one. Well, I don't know that we necessarily need to approve it. We could probably put it in some sort of report that you guys receive and file. We would have a brief conversation at P and Z so they're aware of what we're doing. And then from there, that would be the document that we use. Um, basically saying here, here's the streets plan. It shows the general alignment. Here's the detailed plan for this specific area, I think is how we would handle it.
Okay. And last question, can we try to get some of the information requested tonight and then rediscover this in the near future? Maybe it's a few months from now we get back together?
Hmm.
Okay. Okay, thanks Travis.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, uh, we probably need to wrap this up. Any other comments from anybody before we do? Hearing none, we will move on to item two, which is adjournment. And I'll ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye and aye pose same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Especially planning and zoning, thank you for coming.